So you got the yellow?
Yes, I'm doing the yellow, yes. Okay, well, let's, I guess.
You're gonna do that break in those without, well, you got this side.
Yes.
I'll take that side.
And then you don't forget that one.
Yeah. I actually tried to move that up, but it didn't work.
I know, I know, it was a formatting, formatting feat from heck. Okay. Greetings, everyone. If you all want to take your seat, we'll get started in about a minute or so. My watch is not right. It's at noon yet, so. Do you do introductions or say welcome and welcome to?
You know what? I'll just do it general after that, and then after that, we can do individuals at the end.
Okay.
We would not recognize those at the end.
Okay. Okay. If you'd like to kick it off, feel free.
Okay. Well, the guy first came in with a mustache back that looked like B.J. Peter from the outside.
He does. Some lost, long-lost cousin. She's in there.
Yes, we gotta yell a little bit.
Say about Commissioner Gorman?
Yeah, yeah.
Please.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to get started. I'd like to welcome everybody here for this occasion. The Commissioners would like to actually present a proclamation for this fine event. And I'd just like to let you know that Commissioner Gorman would be with us today, but she's actually representing the Commissioners in Butler County. So with that being said, I would ask, welcome everybody and ask Commissioner Hess if she would actually start the proclamation off.
Thank you, Commissioner Keith, and good afternoon, everyone. We are pleased to present to you today a Black History Month proclamation. And the theme this year is African Americans and the Arts. Whereas Black History Month is a time in the nation to celebrate and recognize the history, achievements, and contributions of Black Americans, and is a powerful reminder that Black history is American history. Black culture is a part of American culture, and Black stories and contributions are essential to the ongoing story of America and its development, our faults, our struggles, our progress, and our aspirations. And whereas Black History Month is a time to honor the contributions and the legacy of African Americans across U.S. history and society, from activists and civil rights pioneers such as Harriet Tubman, Sodinner Truth, Marcus Garvey, Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, and Rosa Parks, to leaders in the United States military, government, business, medicine, industry, politics, science, the arts, religion, culture, entertainment, education, and more. And whereas Indiana County has been home to many prominent Black citizens, including abolitionists who advocated for freedom for people arriving from the South during the years of the Great Migration. And whereas this year's theme, African Americans and the Arts, explores how in the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression, the African-American influence has been paramount, and that African-American artists have used art to preserve history and community memory as well as for empowerment.
And whereas we can still see the unbroken chain of Black art production from antiquated to the present across all continents, from Egypt to Africa, from Europe to the New World, from North to South America, including Canada and the United States and that prior to the American Revolution, enslaved Africans of the Low Country began their more than 300-year tradition of making sweetgrass baskets, revealing their visual artistry via crafts. And whereas the nation's first contribution to music was found in spirituals and blues musicians such as Robert Johnson, McKinley "Muddy Waters" Morganfield, and Riley "B.B." King created and nurtured a style of music that became the bedrock for gospel, soul, and others still popular and evolving forms of music. And whereas Black contributions to literature included works by poets like Phyllis Wheatley, essays, autobiographies, and novel by writers such as David Walker and Maria Stewart. And Black atheists have been manifested through sculptures like Edmona Lewis and painters like Henry O. Tanner. And whereas in the 1920s and '30s, the rise of Black Renaissance and the new Negro movement brought the Black arts to international stage, and Black culture began, since, to becoming a dominant culture movement to the world with emergence of new genre called hip-hop and rap and the term Afrofuturism, which was used approximately 30 years ago in an effort to define culture and artistic productions, music, literature, visual arts, et cetera. That images a future for Black people without oppressing systems and examines how Black history and knowledge intersects with science, technology, and the like.
And whereas in Indiana County, Pennsylvania, we celebrate artists of color, living and deceased, most notably Patty Holmes, a musician, singer with grist for the mill and the Sweet Adelines. In the film, I owe my soul to the company Store and as a theatrical performer. And Chris Cattafamo, an expert on Civil War clothing and material culture, instrumental in the formation of the Indiana County Underground Railroad Project. And Bobby Peake, a musician who is a guitarist and bandleader of the Bobby Peake Imperials. And he had a top-40 hit called Night Rock in the late '50s and early '60s. Bobby Peake Jr., who I assume is his son. The Harris Brothers from the '50s and the '60s. Benjamin Gerodo and Ted Sadler, also musicians with the band The Calvacades. Sonny Sadler, Sandy Sadler, and Clarence Clemmons, musicians with the Mark V. Ted Sadler, for his culinary talents and had a great barbecue stand on Old Route 119 North. Jim Nance, who was a musician. Dr. Lorraine Wilson, musician and professor of the Music Department and Department Chair at IUP. Andre Williams in theatrics and also a musician. Bobby Schofeld, a musician and a singer. Ron Gibson with the, as a culinary arts master, owner of the Juke Joint in Indiana. Dr. Malika Turner, a composer and an author. And Ira Redd and Donald Ward for their culinary talents with Honey and Max Barbecue.
And also Dr. Carolyn Princess, literature, author, writer, creator of cultural and artistic programs. Dr. Lyman Connor, a musician and a painter. Anthony Frazier, our own Anthony, a musician, professional photographer. Matt Thomas, culinary, creator of soul food. Quintetta Thomas, a musician, creator of community youth choir and its vibe. David Hanson Sr., a musician, composer of many songs, including The Voices of Joy, 2007 album, and co-founder of IUP Voices of Joy. David A. Hanson, a percussionist. Joshua Williams, a musician. Bishop Melvin Jenkins, a musician, composers, and Indiana's notable songs, and co-founder of IUP Voices of Joy. Lea Jenkins, a co-author, and Jasmine Jenkins, a musician, recently made her stage debut at the Triad Theater. We have Griff Lawson, a literature, first American to open a bookstore in Indiana and to build a community around an educational development.
And so, we'll continue. Whereas the NAACP Indiana County Branch, along with other local, state, and national entities, will celebrate Black History Month 2024 virtually and in person through various social media to make it easier for the public to participate and gain more information. And whereas Indiana County supports the creation and adoption of a fully inclusive anti-racist and multicultural organization at the local, state, and national levels and believes it is a moral responsibility at the county and for its employees to interrupt institutional and other forms of racism and discrimination that can manifest in policies, practices, and behaviors, both internal and external to Indiana County services and programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Indiana County Board of County Commissioners proclaim that the month of February 2024 is recognized as Black History Month in Indiana County, and we urge all residents to raise their own awareness of Black History Month and to recognize the struggles, the achievements, the contributions of Black Americans through local Black History Month events and to engage in action to create a fully inclusive Indiana County with the aim of creating a more caring, a more just, a more equitable, and a more prosperous community for all. In witness thereof, we therefore set forth our hands with the Seal of Indiana County, Pennsylvania, on this first day of February 2024. Thank you. Before we have Dr. Princess come up, we'd like to recognize some of our local officials here. So now I'd start with Mitchell Henderson. He's from Senator Fetterman's office. So thank you for being with us. And we have many county officials. I know Sheriff Fayock is here. Thank Sheriff Fayock. I know District Attorney Manzi. I think I saw him around the corner. He is here. Our Clerk of the Courts, Randy Daganhold, I think I saw Director Daganhold. Thank you. And Director Maria Jack, thank you for being here with us. Let's see, who else do we have? I know Mayor Wanataski is here from the mayor of Homer City. Are there any other local county officials that I may have missed? Oh, oh, Judge Sateel. I didn't see you there. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Did I catch everybody? Oh, school board officials. Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Quintina Thomas, school board. Any other school board directors? Vital part of our community. Okay. Commissioner Keith, anything you'd like to say? Great. We'll have Dr. Princess come up and make the official presentation.
I'll do it in the side over.
Sure.
I hear in front of the lights probably better.
Yeah.
I'll meet over there. You're in the middle.
You're in the middle. All right, so anyone taking pictures? Okay. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Okay, please.
Wow. How beautiful, right?
Oh, yes.
This is wonderful. Let's give it a round of applause. It's also good to see so many people here, too. Taking a break from work and et cetera, and to be here. So I'm gonna put on my glasses, by the way, guys. So good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Black History Month 2024, opening day, February 1st, 2024. That's history for us, okay? So you guys know who I am. And I want to thank Shereen and Keith and Robin for giving me an opportunity to make a few remarks, okay? So, 400 years of inequality. A people's observance for a just future, so says the Association for 400 Years of Inequality. So at our annual meeting in Holiday Social, and I, I mean, the Indiana County NAACP in December, I noted that we had an exceptional year in 2023. We had many firsts. We announced our Martin Luther King program, and we had it on January 13th, 24th. And as usual, I invited others to join us and to thank and ask the Indiana community for their continued support for equality and justice through both financial resources, personal involvement, and of course, membership. I also noted that while we had a very good year, perhaps an even remarkable year, I stated then that while there is much more work to be done for social justice and equality, we will continue to strive to overcome many challenges in an effort to achieve our mission. But believe it or not, I have been Black history all my life. And I did not get a chance to study it until I went to college some 18 years later from the date of my birth. So I ain't telling you all about. My parents and extended family never talked to us about Black history. After I returned from my first visit in Africa in 1993, I began to understand why. I learned that it was not only due to nothing other than their fear. My parents, my grandparents, and extended parents, their fear. See, they were from Little Rock, Arkansas. But they also believed in hope for their children. And that's what they preached to us. So at this time, I also learned that my mother, in 1993 is when I learned this, that she knew a lot about Black history, but she never talked about it. My father never talked about it. My grandparents, no one talked about it. And at that time, we didn't have it in school either. So when I told her what happened in Africa, it seemed that she felt that she was free. And I told her that they gave me a new name. And I told her what it was. And she said it was meant to be. So from then on, my mom started talking about Black history and all kind of stuff. She's, she's just, I don't know where she got it from.
Okay.
So while our nation seems to be straddled by many challenges as we enter Black History Month 2024, I believe we have a lot to celebrate. And it's no wonder why we say Black history is American history. Black history is not only my history, but also your history. You see, Black people, people of African descent, African Americans, have been front and center of civilization and world human development since the beginning of time. And despite the oppression, repression, and even suppression, and perhaps even more important, for over 400 years, numerous Black people of African descent, African Americans, have worked tirelessly and continue to do so today to build and develop our nation's physical structure and basic infrastructure. And that's what we do here in Indiana County in the NAACP. Thus, it seems that all marginalized people, particularly all people, particularly marginalized groups, have benefited from the, from the work of people of African descent. Even before Carter G. Wilson, who's known as the father of Black history, founded Black History Month in 1926, the NAACP, with two-plus million people across this nation and the world, has been a premier organization that has worked to ensure the political, social, economic, and civil rights of all person and to eliminate race-based discrimination. And they have done it for over 116 years. Still going strong. They have a goal. We have a goal. A vision of ensuring this society, which, to ensure this society in which all the individuals have equal rights without discrimination based on race and other. And we in Indiana have been doing this for nearly 90 years. We work within the confines of the national constitution and bylaws, but we also target our local needs and wants. And as I previously alluded to, 2023 seemed to begin to reflect upon the fruits of our labor. So we in the Indiana NAACP have received several Black History Month proclamations over the past several years. But this one seems to be more special. So I am thankful to Indiana County Commissioners, the staff of the courthouse, and the volunteers for the work they have done to make today's presentation possible and to do it on the opening day of Black History Month 2024. I'm almost done. But I am especially thankful to our Vice President, who is also one of the County Commissioners, Ms. Shereen Hess, for her work. Give a round of applause. For her work in organizing and making today's event possible. Not only was the declaration, I think you guys saw it. Did everybody see it? Here it goes. See, I got it right here. Not only is this day printed in our local newspaper for the first time in my 30-plus years here, and it was on the front page, but it also encouraged for all to see why participation in the activities that we do and it validates the ultimate outcome. So situated within this proclamation, we worked on it. And Shereen, bless her heart, she put it together and said, hey, doc. Let's look at this. So I did. But it does a couple of things. It reflects on how far we've come as a county. It reflects upon the progress we've made and are making in Indiana County. And it encourages and sets forth the direction and the parameters we need to take to move forward as a society and why, and perhaps more importantly, acknowledges, gives respect, and pays homage to the accomplishment and work of a historically lone and major population of our country for its contributions to our nation by Black people of African descent and African American. The last thing I wanted to say is this. I've heard this and I've seen it quite a bit. Diversity. We talk about diversity. We talk about DEI. We say DEI is racist. That's far from the truth. You can take my word, or you can look it up yourself. It's not phobic. Diversity is all of us. Is everybody in this room. It seeks equability and equality. It creates a public space for recognizing the makeup of our nation and its many people. It benefits all of us. So Indiana County NAACP, and several people are here. I'm glad to see that. Half our boy is here, by the way. Except Indiana County Commissioners 2024 Black His Proclamation, announcing Black History Month in Indiana County, Pennsylvania, with pride and honor. We look forward to working together and with wide and broad participation of the community members in the many activities that we hold throughout the month by the local NAACP or any other group in honor of Black History Month 2024 and the national theme by the Association for the Study of Life and History in America, African Americans and Arts. And on December, I'm sorry, man, at the end of the year already. On February 23rd, we will have a major program at Chevy Chase Community Center, six till, six till whenever. And our theme is African American History, Arts, and Political Action. It's free and open to everyone, and we hope that you will join up. Thank you again, Shereen, Keith, and you guys. Give yourself a round of applause.
Well, thank you, Dr. Princess, and the honor is ours to be able to present this proclamation. This county is stronger because of the local chapter of NAACP. We invite you all to become a member. I do want to point out our board members because they work hard. So Anna Frank, Ira Redd, Denise Dragich, Arlie Wanataski, Lea L. Jenkins, Lil Clemmons. Who did I miss? Anybody? Well, thank. Well, thank, that's, that's here. Yes, there's several other board members that unable to be here, but I, yeah, your words are inspirational, Carolyn, and we really appreciate that. All the work you have done, all the work that has been done for 90-some years is incredible.
Incredible.
Yeah. The NAACP is the, America's oldest civil rights organization, and working every day for equality and, and discrimination. So Commissioner Keith, have any words you'd like to say?
No. I'd like just to thank Dr. Princess for, for fine words, and I'd like to thank the NAACP. And again, thank you all for coming today. We appreciate each and every one of you, and you're welcome to stay around and mingle if you like. So thank you.
I'd also like to say a thank you to the Indiana Gazette, because they have been tireless in promoting the events and everything we do, so.
And also Jake from WCCS.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, WCCS. Yeah, we, that's wonderful.
And we'd like to also thank each of you. Thank the counties, the people of the county and the community for fully supporting us. And like I said, we have seen progress. You guys don't know, but we've seen progress, and we thank you and hope you continue to work with us.
Well, I think Dr. Princess's final words are a great way to end this program. So thanks again, everyone, for being here. Enjoy the day.
You're welcome.